I can't hear anything. Am I missing anything?
No, you're just listening to staff trying to get something posted to the website so you can approve the agenda. Actually, right now, at this moment, we're just trying to get the live stream running so that we can, the mayor can call the meeting to order.
Oh, okay. So when he called, I just was afraid I wasn't hearing anything. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call this regular meeting of council to order. First, I'd like to acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the traditional territories of the Sonahuas First Nation. First item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. I'll just simply make the motion that the April 6, 2022 regular council meeting agenda be adopted as amended with additional aid attachments for item 9B of our agenda. So is there a seconder? Second by Councilor Savage. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. I'll move to calling the question. All those in favor and opposed, that's carried unanimously. At this point, I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess because staff is trying to upload and distribute the attachments for item 9B. So it's going to take a little bit of time. So noting the time right now is, on my watch anyways, is 6:05. So at 6:15, I will be calling meeting back to order. Thank you. Okay, I'm calling this meeting back to order. Just waiting to see where Councilor Gusselbruck is, if he appears. We'll continue. And just through the council, just by a show of hands, if you received an email regarding the missing attachments for item 9B. And through Councilor Gusselbruck, Councilor Wilson, did you receive an email with those items? Just so you have the reference. And from what I understand, Director Limshu will be bringing them up on the shared screen at some point during our meeting. And you'll have them there as well. And then for us in chambers, we'll be getting provided a paper copy, so we have them in front of us as well. So. All right. So that being said, we'll move on in our agenda. So the agenda is being approved. And now we're on to item five of our agenda. So this is the public and statutory hearings. We have one this evening. So I'll just read the title. So it's the District of Lansville Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 150, 2019 Amendment, Regional Context Statement and Service Areas, Bylaw Number 262, 2021. Below that states that a notice of public hearing for the Bylaw Number 262, September 8, 2021, staff report. So that was a notice of motion, or sorry, notice of public hearing. So from here, I will proceed into the public hearing. So, good evening, and on behalf of the District of Lansville, I'd like to welcome everyone watching the live stream, participating in the public hearing remotely via Zoom and watching in the council chamber. This public hearing is being conducted by electronic means pursuant to the Local Government Act, Community Charter, and the procedural bylaw for the purpose of council to receive and consider input from all persons who believe that their interests and property is affected by the proposed District of Lansville Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 150, 2019 Amendment, Regional Context Statement and Service Areas, Bylaw Number 262, 2021. We have adapted our public hearing procedures tonight to facilitate remote participation. For those of you watching via our live stream, please note that you can join this Zoom meeting webinar to speak to Bylaw 262 by going to lansville.ca and clicking on April 6 in the calendar. Click on view details and follow the instructions to register following the Zoom webinar link provided, and join the meeting before the hearing for Bylaw 262 is closed. The council chamber at the municipal hall is located at 7192 Lansville Road and is open for members of the public who do not have the ability to connect to the public hearing electronically, so that you can attend in person, to watch and hear, and ensure that you have had an opportunity to be heard. Those who have pre-registered via Zoom will be given first opportunity to speak, and then those present in council chambers. All speakers lists will be managed by staff in person from the council chamber. All registered speakers will have three minutes to speak each time. Remote speakers will be asked to unmute by staff when your name is called and mute it again once you have concluded your remarks. Do not put your phone on speaker. Do not hang up or leave the webinar if you wish to speak a second time. Members of the public will be provided an opportunity to be heard on matters related only to Bylaw 262. No one will be nor should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views, no one. Once the first opportunity speakers list has been exhausted, I will call for a second time speakers who have new information to present and wish to speak again. Remote participants who wish to speak again will be asked to use the Zoom raise hand feature to indicate that you'd like to speak. This function can be found in your webinar controls. Speakers in the council chamber must sign the second opportunity speakers list. If you're participating by phone, the raise hand function can be activated by pressing star nine on your keypad. I will ask you to restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw and be as brief and concise as possible. We are asking speakers to respect a three-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak has the opportunity. Speakers are permitted to speak more than once only if they are providing new or additional information. Please note, there can be up to a minute lag between the meeting livestream and the Zoom webinar. Following the close of the public hearing, council must not accept or consider further submissions or comments regarding Bylaw 262. Immediately following the close of tonight's public hearing, the regular council meeting will continue with the agenda order so that council may consider third reading and adoption of proposed Bylaw 262. I will now proceed to the public hearing for agenda item 5A. This public hearing is being convened to consider the proposed District of Lansville Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 150, 2019 Amendment, Regional Context Statement and Service Areas, Bylaw Number 262, 2021. At this public hearing, any person in attendance remotely or in the council chamber who believes that their interests in property is affected by proposed Bylaw 262 will be given an opportunity to be heard on matters contained in the bylaw. However, it is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to the matter contained in the Bylaw 262. It is my responsibility as chair of this hearing to ensure that all remarks are so restricted. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members during this hearing is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of the council during this hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with the public. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to Bylaw 262, becomes abusive, or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. I will now call in the Director of Planning and Community Services, Director Frank Limshu, to introduce the proposed bylaw. So through to Director Limshu.
Thank you, Mayor Swain, and good evening, council members. So the purpose of this bylaw is to amend the regional context statement, amend the growth containment boundary, and remove the water and sewer service area maps within the existing official community plan. So more specifically, as outlined in the staff report dated September 8, 2021, when this was first considered by council, it was discovered by staff that the regional growth strategy goals nine and 10 were duplicated. As well, there was inconsistency between the text and the maps for goal number four. So these two items can actually be easily amended and considered housekeeping items from a staff perspective. The third item that the bylaw addresses is the removal of the service maps and reference to service areas within the official community plan. The purpose of this removal is to provide more flexibility with respect to the provision of services throughout the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Limshu. At this point, I will call for the first time persons registered remotely and in the council chamber who believe that their interests and property is affected by proposed Bylaw Number 262. Please wait for your name to be called, and when it is your turn, state your full name and civic address.
We do not have anybody signed up at the entrance to speak. And nobody is in the audience. We have one member in the audience, and he's indicated not to speak.
So that takes us through that list awfully fast. So I will call for a second time for persons registered remotely and in the council chamber who have new information to present and wish to speak again. Not that we have anybody speaking again. And through to staff, is anybody all of a sudden registered? Okay, staff has indicated nobody has registered. Before declaring this public hearing for Bylaw Number 262 close, I would like to reiterate the following. The close of this hearing, council must not accept or consider further submissions or comments regarding Bylaw 262. I will call for a third and final time for persons registered remotely and in the council chamber who have new information to present and wish to speak again. And I can see nobody has registered in chambers. And through to staff, has anybody registered remotely? And staff has indicated nobody has registered remotely. Thank you. Seeing no one wishes to speak, I declare the public hearing for District of Lansville Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 150, 2019 Amendment, Regional Context Statement and Service Areas, Bylaw Number 262, 2021, close. Thank you, everybody, for listening, and council will consider third reading and adoption of Bylaw 262 under legislative matters in this evening's agenda. That concludes the public hearing. Okay, now we're moving on to item six of our agenda. So this is under general matters. We have Mr. Sean DePaul from, or sorry, the Director of Water and Wastewater Services from the RDN here this evening to present. And man, I need glasses. And I believe you're accompanied by a couple other individuals from the RDN, who I'll just get you to introduce yourself. And this is in regards to the Regional District of Nanaimo Southern Water Community Development Cost Charges for information. So through to you, Mr. DePaul, if you wish to introduce your team, and welcome to our meeting.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Yeah, first of all, I'm Sean DePaul, Director of Water and Wastewater Services. And I have Lorena Mueller, Wastewater Program Coordinator from the Regional District of Nanaimo with me as well. So what I'll do right now is share my screen and bring out the presentation, if that's all right.
I believe staff will give you those permissions when, there you go.
So, yeah, just to confirm, I am sharing at this point?
That's correct.
Excellent, okay. So yeah, thanks for having me here today. I'm going to be going over the Southern Community Development Cost Charge Bylaw Amendment that we're currently working on. And here's the outline. I'll be talking about DCCs, our current DCC review, wastewater capital projects, the proposed new DCC rates, and then looking ahead from today. So, DCCs are established to offset costs directly related to new development. So when new development comes in, they require capacity of local government infrastructure, and we establish DCCs to collect funds to expand that infrastructure. The Local Government Act sets out general guidelines or requirements, and we typically capture those through our bylaw and our bylaw amendments. One of the things under the Local Government Act is the requirement for 1% assist factor to apply to all capital DCC-funded projects. The RDN applies DCCs for wastewater to pay for projects to increase capacity of our wastewater facilities. And the wastewater facilities include the major interceptor line that runs the length of the four municipalities, as well as pump stations, forest mains, treatment plant, and outfall. Local governments are responsible for collecting DCCs during development. On the behalf of the Regional District of Nanaimo, as part of the collection of their own DCCs, those DCCs are then transferred over to the RDN's finance department on a regular basis. Under the Southern Community DCCs, we have a provision to reduce DCCs up to 50% for affordable housing developments, and there are certain criteria that those housing developments need to meet before they're considered for that reduction. With that reduction too, the Regional District of Nanaimo advances a board report noting the development and the amount that will be reduced or forgiven. Wastewater DCC bylaw was last adopted or updated in 2017, although it feels like I was just in the council chambers yesterday making the same presentation. 2021, we started the review. We used our engineering consultant, AECOM, to assist us with this review. The development projections were updated through the review. As well, we looked at our capital cost estimates and scheduling and updated those as well. Those were initially captured in our five-year financial plan. It was just recently adopted. And then based on those two things, we've calculated new DCC rates. We did spend significant amount of time gathering this information with the District of Lansville and City of Nanaimo. And we'd like to thank Director, yeah, Director Limshu for all of his assistance. We've had several meetings, and he provided us input along the way. Our capital projects, we just have two capital projects this time around for our DCCs. We have the Departure Bay Pump Station. It is a total of $34 million. 80% is funded through DCCs, $27 million, and that's related to increased flow and growth. The second one we have is the Hammond Bay Forest Main, and this will be a twinning. And we've identified that as a $45 million project, 84% DCC-funded. So $37 million may gain related to increased flow and growth. But there is a component that is replacing aging of the structure on both of those projects, and that's funded through general reserves. Here is the existing rates for the different development types and the new proposed rate. You'll see single-family dwelling is on You'll see single-family dwelling is gone up fifty-seven percent, and that increase over the other, what other development types is to do with persons per household. The persons per household has increased, so the population equivalent has increased, and that is reflected in the higher rate here. The remaining development categories are forty-eight percent increase over the last five years. And these development categories, we've worked both with the City of Nanaimo and District of Lansville to determine what the rate should be based on, on the different, whether it's per unit, per connection, or per square meter of development. And this is the final slide. This is where we're at, so we're at the delegation stage. This is the last of the four delegations that I'm making tonight. I made three others to Parksville, Qualcomm Beach, and the City of Nanaimo. From here, we're advancing a board report to the RDN Board, April twenty-sixth, and that will be for first reading, as well as getting authorization to go forward for public information sessions that we're planning to carry out in May, and then that'll be followed by second and third reading in June is what we're planning at this point in time. And of course, that depends on the public information sessions. We'll then do bylaw submission to the province and adoption to follow. Adoption, we're looking at September, October, and that will be dependent upon how long the province reviews our bylaw amendments and whether there's any back and forth. So that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation.
Stop sharing here.
Sorry, we're just having some weird sounds come through the chambers, but.
Sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, so just two seconds. Through to council, I'll offer up some.
Mark, you're muted.
I don't believe, can you hear?
Mayor Swain, sorry, you're muted. I'll just go ahead with my question, if that's okay. Okay, I'll go ahead. Sorry, Sean, if you could go back, presenting, and go back to this second to last slide that you were presenting, where the DCCs go up, I believe it was fifty-seven percent for single-family. I'm just trying to get a handle on understanding and how that, and forgive me on this one, but how does that impact Lansville residents? Is that if somebody is subdividing a property, that that is a required DCC that gets paid to the Nanaimo or the Regional District? Can you maybe just elaborate a little bit more for me? That'd be great. You're muted, Sean, sorry.
Darn it, I really didn't want to do that. Thank you. So depending upon the development type, so if it's single-family dwelling, if there is a, if there is a second, essentially a second connection related to a development that was not previously existing, that development will pay DCC, and there'll be the RDN DCC, this is payable to the RDN, and then there'll be the District of Lansville DCCs on top of that. So I'm not sure of the amount to the Lansville ones, but the new wastewater DCC is four thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
So the, so fifty-seven percent increase since the last one, which I think you said was two thousand seventeen. So that's, I think, did you say two thousand seventeen was the last time that you updated these DCCs?
That's correct.
So fifty-seven percent increase is quite high. Is that related to just the increased costs, like?
Yeah, it's related to several things. So first would be the Greater Nanaimo Police Control Center secondary expansion. We needed to borrow funds for that project, so that was a DCC project previously. And then we do have two relatively large capital projects. So the DCC rates are related to ultimately what projects been done in the past and the borrowing that's been required, and then, of course, future DCC capital projects. So we've had a number, we've had a number of large capital projects in the past, and we have a couple more coming forward here. So that's, that is the large increase. I'll just say, though, to allow a new development to connect to wastewater, four thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars, in comparison to an onsite septic system, is despite the increase, it is a relatively reasonable cost from that perspective. Thank you.
And through to the rest of the council, is there any additional questions for the presenter? So actually, I see Director Limshu, and then we'll go to Counselor Gusselbrecht.
Sorry, I had no comment at this point in time unless there's questions from council.
Oh, so apparently you've taken your hand down. I just can't see it in chambers here on the screen I'm looking at. So through to Counselor Gusselbrecht, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair to Director Limshu, can you confirm that our single-family DCCs currently are in the range of twenty-one thousand dollars?
Through to Mayor and Council, currently, our DCC bylaws, which are actually on our website, for a single family, I believe, is just under eighteen thousand, approximately. And so our DCCs is not, when I say eighteen thousand, it's not.
This is a point of privilege. Can you please turn your microphones off if you're not speaking? So I think that's through to Counselor Gusselbrecht, there's a lot of background noise coming through. Go ahead, Director Limshu.
Thank you. So when I make reference to our DCC bylaws, I'm talking, we charge DCCs for a variety of items. So there's water, there's sewer, there's road, there's drainage, there's parks. And combined, it works out to approximately a shade under eighteen thousand for a single-family lot. And so, like I said, these numbers are on our website, they're in form of a bylaw, and that's what we charge for a single-family lot at this point in time.
Thank you. A supplementary to Sean DePaul, can you explain the one percent assist factor and how that relates to that single-family proposed DCC of forty-six hundred dollars?
Yes, through your worship. So the one percent assist factor, it goes back to the capital project. When we determine if a capital project is.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. DePaul, but again, point of privilege, I need microphones muted when you're not speaking, please, because it really creates a lot of background noise, at least here in the gallery or in the chambers. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. DePaul.
Yeah, so the one percent assist factor relates back to the capital project. So if we have a capital project that is, well, I had the example, one of the capital projects was eighty percent funded through DCCs, that's what we've calculated. The costs are related to the expansion component of the project. Once we've calculated eighty percent in that amount, there's an additional one percent that is removed off of that and paid for by existing residents, and that is a requirement of the province. The province looks at it as there is, there is a small level of benefit for new development, and that is a way to acknowledge that benefit. There is another way that the assist factor is used, and the City of Nanaimo used it with water treatment plant, where there's a requirement to build that infrastructure way, way into the, and it provides capacity way into the future, and there they provided a twenty-five percent assist factor. We've never exceeded the one percent assist factor for our projects, though.
Okay, thank you. Any additional speakers or questions? Counselor Savage, and then is there anybody else through to council? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Savage.
Thank you. The upgrade to the Hammond Bay Plant was slated for around twenty fourteen, but I believe it's been upgraded now or is in the process of being upgraded. Can you tell us what level it's been upgraded to? I think you said secondary, is that high secondary, low secondary? And I've got a follow-up question, thank you.
Yes, through your worship. It is, it's been expanded to upgrade it and expand it to a secondary treatment plant. From when there's a reference to primary, secondary, tertiary. Yeah, it's the process, so it's a biological process. We are, though, achieving a very high-level quality of effluent. Previously, we were around, a measure that we have is total suspended solids, and it was around ninety or a hundred. We have it now under ten. So it is, it is a significant improvement to the effluent quality through secondary treatment.
Okay, thank you. And if it's improved again in the future, the DCCs can be fully contributed to the improvement as well as expansion, can they?
Through your worship, no. The improvements, so when we went to secondary treatment, that portion of the project was paid for by all users. It's not a capacity-related, that part is, component of the project was not capacity-related. However, we expanded the treatment plant, and the expansion component was covered by DCC funds. So it has to be related to greater capacity to handle a larger volume of wastewater.
Great, thank you. And last one is the sludge from the plant has been sprayed on the Timber West property quite successfully, I recall, and increasing growth there, but that's ending this year, is it? Could you tell us when that's ending and where the sludge will be going thereafter?
Yeah, through your worship. So just a couple of things, just to, there was, back in nineteen ninety-six, for a very short period of time, there was a trial that they did spray sludge onto the wood lot through the University of British Columbia. There was a trial with Netovan. That was the only time that it was sprayed. Now it's applied, and it's applied with a soil-like consistency. And I guess just one other thing, it's referenced as biosolids based on the process, processing that we do at the plant. The material has been going up to the end of Dumont Road, Whittles Road. There is several application sites that we apply with, and that's mosaic-managed land. The new location where we are taking the biosolids now is at the end of Nanaimo River Road. There's an area called Black, it's a blackjack area in sort of a relatively remote area where the forest fertilization program is continuing. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. There was a bit of a, a little bit of extra information outside of the DCC charges. Through the rest of the council, any additional questions for the presenter? Okay, hearing or seeing none, I would like to, on behalf of council, thank you for coming this evening and presenting to our council. So again, thank you, Mr. DePaul.
Thank you.
Okay, so that moves us on to, excuse me, seven in our agenda. So this is the consent agenda. We have one item listed. I'll simply make the motion that the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, regular council, or sorry, jumped off to the actual agenda item. So we're looking at that, the recommendations listed for seven A in the consent agenda be approved. So do I have a second or to that? Second by Counselor Wilson, and I will move to call in a question, all those in favor and opposed. That looks like it's carried unanimously. All right, so that takes us on to public input period. Do we have any individuals registered this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, and then we do have one person in the gallery this evening for public input. If. This is just a time for public input, and if we do have anybody that's going to speak, then I'll read my preamble. Okay, so the person has indicated, so I'll just read my preamble. So persons recognized by the chair to speak must first state their name and address for the record. They may speak up to once for two minutes unless council resolves otherwise, and are limited to providing comment regarding items listed on the council agenda for this evening. Comments must be directed to the chair and not to be directed at individual members of council, staff, or the audience, and must not include personnel issues. So just state your name and address for the record, please.
Warren Griffey.
And address, too, please.
Six nine nine five Lanswood Avenue, Lansville. Need my glasses. So as discussed, the public hearing for Village South, it's obvious that, as having the public hearing was.
So, Mr. Griffey, I need you to state which agenda item that you're speaking to.
I'm speaking to agenda item, Village South SOC and New Business.
That'd be under twelve C.
Or twelve C, I'm sorry. So when we discussed the public hearing, it's obvious that we just had a public hearing. There was no voices heard, no voices that showed, no voices that, that, there's just no feeling in what should be the public being able to speak to council, and I think electronically.
Mr. Griffey, I'm gonna interject at this point. I really do need you to speak to the actual agenda item, which has to do with a geotechnical report in relation to holding a public hearing.
Right, and.
So you need to restrict your remarks to the actual item that's listed in their agenda and not about the public hearing process.
Okay, but doesn't that not speak to the public being, having the ability to speak at a public hearing?
No, does not. So the motion that is on our agenda this evening has to do with a geotechnical report and a request in relation to that. So we're not here to debate or have public input on just the public hearing process itself, is strictly in relation to what's on the agenda, which you have.
Okay, so in C, where the Village House public hearing is scheduled for April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, is, we haven't got to that yet, right? Is that correct?
We have not gotten to having the actual public hearing, but I'm not here this evening to debate the public hearing and the process. What we're here to, here is your input in relation to the agenda item, which speaks to a geotechnical report and a request.
Right, okay. So my only concern is that all of this process in the Village South development, the public hearing that we just had, I'm just trying to relate the two. And is that not part of, not part of what I can say?
So, Mr. Griffey, I really need you to make your remarks in regards to the geotechnical report or that subject matter, and to limit your comments regarding the public hearing.
Okay, well, I am concerned about the geotechnical reports, and I am concerned about us being left with areas that we can't build on, areas where we are being given property that is supposedly green space, and also for the construction of some buildings. I'm very concerned about the process of this going through without going through a proper, a proper assessment, because it's going to affect, who knows where that water is going to flow? Because when we go through this, and if we do this, and I don't know what the hurry is, if we do this now and make a decision now, it's going to affect us in the long run. This water run is going to, may go up Lynn. It may go, there's many places that I don't think have been looked at properly. And so it behooves the council to be active in producing reports that are going to show all of the potential problems, all of them. So I leave you with that. I just, I'm very concerned. I just, I'm very concerned for the residents all around the Village South. It's not just the Village South, it's, you know, that's all new.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Griffey, for your public input, but that I'm sure exceeds your time. I know I had some speaking time in there as well, but. Okay, so that takes us on to item nine of our agenda, so under Legislative Matters in Fact Nine A, which is Bylaw Number Two Six Two. So there's a staff recommendation, subject to the public hearing input. As someone prepared, I'll just simply make the motion that the District of Lansville Official Community Plan Bylaw Number One Fifty Twenty-Nineteen Amendment, Regional Context Statement and Service Area Bylaw Number Two Six Two Twenty Twenty-One be given third reading. Is there a second or to that? Second by Councilor Gusselbrecht. Discussion on the motion. I have nothing to add at this time. Through the secondary, Councilor Gusselbrecht, if you wish.
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, and through to the rest of the council, I can start a speakers list, so we have Councilor Savage. Okay, and I don't see anybody else, so go ahead, Councilor Savage.
Thank you. Question through Chair to Staff, please. The ALR land within the golf course is included within the growth containment boundary, which is a good thing. But is there anything about these changes to the OCP which would prevent this ALR land in the golf course to be included in a development proposal? In other words, the district could take ownership of this golf course ALR land as an amenity. The Norriston Creek corridor is within this ALR land. This corridor can provide a great trail linking to the woodlot trail, and the remainder of the ALR land could be used for community gardens, a community orchard, et cetera. So I just want to make sure these OCP changes are not going to endanger the district's ability to acquire this land of part of a, let's say there's a rezoning application if one is made.
And just before Director Lim Chu answers that, just through to staff, can we have the video feed stopped for the participants for nine B, please? And then when it's time for that agenda item, we'll bring that feedback. Thank you. So Director Lim Chu?
Thank you, Mayor, through the council. If I understand the question correctly, you're asking whether or not this amendment prevents the District of Lansville from obtaining ownership of all or a portion of the golf course lands that are currently in the ALR, correct? So the short answer to that is no, it does not. You know, the process of rezoning and amendment bylaws for future development on the lands is a separate process that one has to go through. And whatever agreements are negotiated at the time, whether lands are dedicated or not dedicated, these amendments won't affect that in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, so there's no way then that that ALR land could be sliced off in application, not be part of it, using the fact that ALR land is now outside the growth containment boundary? So that's not a possibility at all, these changes could be used for that then?
No, so if I understand your question correctly, is, do these changes affect the district's ability in obtaining ownership of a portion of those ALR lands? And the answer is no. You know, at the end of the day, we don't have an official application on the table for discussion at this point in time. And certainly, when the applicant or the property owners do decide to submit something, if that ever happens, you know, what lands actually get dedicated to the district will be determined at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. And through Chair to Staff, another question. Lansville's most southerly property is eleven thirty-nine acres owned by Timber West, which is zoned, currently zoned forestry and previously zoned resource, M L eight. Of note, the foothills was also owned resource, then rezoned to residential. So is it because the RDN growth management boundary excludes this Timber West land that Lansville also puts Timber West outside the boundary? Or can Lansville include Timber West within our growth containment boundary and then apply to the RDN for an amendment? Would that be the process?
Unfortunately, I don't have the map in front of me, so I can't fully answer that question at this point in time. Certainly, I can look into it and get back to all of council on that particular question. But, you know, certainly if council were to adopt the bylaw as it sits presently and there, we do require change in the future, there is a process to go through for amending the maps and the bylaws. And depending on that change, it may require approval from the regional district because it may affect the regional growth boundaries or not. But yeah, I don't think I'm in a position right now to fully answer the question that's presented.
Right, okay. Well, the reason I ask is I'm always trying to think far ahead. And if Minister of Housing Eby goes ahead with his proposal to, for the provincial government to usurp local government's authority over zoning and move to, you know, the central government model, which has failed elsewhere, then we can apply some population growth on this Timber West land to satisfy the possibility that we may be saddled with a growth quota we have to meet. And if it's already in place, then this could be a very handy strategy to produce a development which could be even a couple of hundred acres of this eleven thirty-nine, but things could be worked out for more park amenities, et cetera. I really don't see the downside to it, including this. It would still leave us the option. We could choose to leave it forestry as it's zoned, or if we're in a tight spot, we could work with Timber West, because Timber West has regularly been converting forestry land to residential land all up and down the island. So it's certainly a possibility they could, they might entertain this. So, but that would be the process. What if I was to make an amendment tonight while we're adjusting the urban containment boundary anyway, or the growth containment boundary, used to be called that? Would that not just be part and parcel of this process? We'd then submit it with the amendment to the RDN, get their feedback, and then go from there?
Yeah, I believe if that change were to move forward, it would most likely trigger another public hearing.
Okay, so just recognizing, Councilor Savage, you're probably through your speaking time on that item, or for now anyways, I'll just call upon the rest of the council.
I'll leave it for now, and I'll make an amendment in a minute.
There's any additional speakers to this? Okay, hearing none, I can go for a second round. So, Councilor Savage, if you have an amendment?
Yes, my amendment is, which is very timely, because we're dealing with this changing the boundary now, that District of Lansville Official Community Plan Bylaw Number One Fifty Twenty-Nineteen Amendment, Regional Context Statement and Service Areas Bylaw Number Two Sixty-Two Twenty Twenty-One be amended by including the eleven thirty-nine acre Timber West property, Block Five Oh Five, Nanus District, within Lansville's growth containment boundary.
Could I just ask you to repeat that slowly? And just a reminder that you need to preface it with that the motion on the floor be amended by adding, and what you'd be adding is the words after third reading, as amended, and then go into what it is you're proposing be amended.
Okay, I'll do that prelude. And then what I repeated was exactly the bylaw that's before us, word for word. And then I added be amended by including the eleven thirty-nine acre Timber West property, Block Five Oh Five, Nanus District, within Lansville's-
Just a little slower, I've got, that the motion on the floor be amended by adding as amended by including the one one three nine acre Timber West property, five oh-
A block five oh five.
Block Five Oh Five. So within Lansville's growth containment boundary. So just for clarity, there is a motion on the floor to give the bylaw third reading. This is a motion to amend the bylaw. However, staff have already advised that adding this to the motion would then require a new public hearing. Therefore, you couldn't give it third reading? So we're in a bit of a quandary, I think. Perhaps it would be a motion that council refers the motion on the floor for staff to bring forward a report or to, or for council staff to reschedule a new public hearing?
Yes, well, that would be fine. I would just make the motion, and if it passes, then we just reschedule another public hearing and just as easy as the one tonight, and-
Sorry, but the problem is that the motion that's on the floor is to give the bylaw third reading. So you can't, we can't suggest that you can give it third reading because we know that would be unlawful. You have to give it an amended second reading with this change and then go to a new public hearing. So I think council will need to decision in some way that they are abandoning the motion to give it third reading. Or, I don't know, maybe Frank has a suggestion? I've never seen this.
Yeah, through Director Lim Chu, maybe you can offer a comment?
No, I believe Director Coats is correct. You know, right now, the motion on the floor is to give third reading to the bylaw as presented. If council decides that it wishes to amend the bylaw as presented, most likely it would trigger another public hearing. So I guess that's really the question for council to decide is, do you proceed with the bylaw as presented and give third reading? You know, recognizing the fact that the lands that Councilor Savage is speaking about is, you know, not really on anyone's radar at this point in time for future development, I think council should be aware and recognize that we do review our OCP or zoning bylaws and even the regional growth strategy from time to time. And certainly, if there's a requirement to amend our containment boundary at that point in time, then certainly we could look at that. But if council feels there's a need to consider that at this point, then I believe where Director Coats is going was to look at extending, not considering third reading at this point, and having staff amend the bylaws accordingly, so that they're consistent with the motion that's being presented by Councilor Savage.
And through the council, it's just been, you know, you've moved an amendment, hasn't been seconded at this point. Okay, so is there a second or for the amendment? I'm gonna second it for discussion, because I have something I'd like to say, but through to the mover of the amendment first, and then I'll speak.
Yes, thank you. And through Chair to Staff, please. Director Lim Chu, would it be preferable to you if this item was referred back to staff? And you could, we've done this before, rescind third reading, and then you could give a verbal update, and by then you could have checked to see if it is part of the, how it relates to the regional districts' growth containment boundary and give others a little time to think about it? Would that be a preference for you?
You know, it's hard for me to answer that question because I hadn't really thought about it. You know, I had just basically picked up the bylaw in midstream. So I was anticipating that, you know, these kinds of discussions would have been had previously prior to the public hearing. You know, at this point, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, because, like I said, I don't have the map in front of me, so I don't know. I'm trying to picture exactly where the property is, and it's difficult for me to provide an appropriate response to you.
All right, well, I think the key might be then is to refer this amendment to the next meeting. And through to Director Coats, would the process be, we would then rescind third reading, go back to amending the second reading, and then going ahead with another public hearing and go from there?
For clarity, you have not, council has not given the bylaw third reading. You have a motion on the floor to give the bylaw third reading. There's a second motion that's on the floor to amend the motion on the floor. And you want to amend, what you said is that you want to amend the motion on the floor to add the words as amended by including the one thousand one hundred thirty-nine acre blah blah blah, you know that part. So my answer, it depends on how council leaves this. So if council votes on the amendment motion and it passes, then we have the problem of a motion on the floor to give third reading, because it would be as amended, that would not be kosher, so.
Yeah, it would just go to a second public hearing, yeah.
No, we would, yeah. I think the clean way, if council truly wishes to stop this process and go back, is to withdraw these motions, withdraw the amendment of the third reading, withdraw the third reading, put a motion on the floor for staff to bring forward a report on the option of going to a new public hearing and a new third reading, or giving a recommendation to proceed back to the original plan of going with third reading.
Yes, I think you're right, and that is the cleanest way to do that. So this has already been seconded, so it's up to council. So what I'm suggesting, Mayor Swain, is that we defer this amendment or withdraw this amendment along with withdrawing the third reading motion, and then get a staff report back on what their recommendation is or thoughts are relating to the region growth management plan. I just feel we're missing a big opportunity here, since we're already doing the urban containment boundary, do it all at once, so that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to this, and then I see Director Lim Chu had his hand up, and then Councilor Gusselbrecht. Yes, I did second this for discussion. I won't be supporting the amendment the way I see this. And just for Director Lim Chu's benefit, the area that's in question here is the southern portion of the map on Attachment Four of the foothills, so the southern area- of the foothills. So the southern area of the foothills, the Timber West lands. And yeah, so in terms of this process, what I will be supporting this evening is that we go ahead and move third reading and we go ahead and adopt this. That's what I'd be supporting and then a later date. And it could be, I don't know what the timeline is, is six months or I don't know if we have a certain timeline we have to follow.
I'm not aware of any limitation, only when, only when a bylaw fails.
Oh, there you go. I've got a bit jumbled up in my head. But anyways, we can always come back and amend this further to include that area. So those are my thoughts on this. So I won't be supporting amendment and I'll be likely supporting the the third reading. So through to Director Limshu, did you have, your hand was up, but it's now gone. So I'll move to Counselor Gusselbrecht. And this is just speaking to the amendment.
I was just gonna mention that we called a question. Thank you.
Yeah, so questions being called is probably being sufficient debate. So we'll just move to calling the question on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? And opposed, knowing that Mayor Swain's opposed, Counselor Proctor, Counselor Wilson, Counselor Gusselbrecht opposed, the amendment fails. Now we're back to third reading as presented in our agenda. Any further discussion on third reading? So Counselor Savage, go ahead.
Yes, I won't be supporting this for the same reasons I brought up, second reading. I just feel that it's, I'm just not certain of all that, all the implications of it. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Any additional speakers? Hearing none, I'll move to calling the question on third reading. All those in favor? And opposed, knowing that Counselor Savage has opposed, the third reading carries. So now we're on to adoption. So there's no debate at adoption. So I'll just simply move to calling the question. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, my bad. Getting, trying to be too efficient here. So I'll just read the motion. So to make it all official, that the district in Lanceville official community plan by law number 1502019 amendment, regional regional context statement and service area by law number 2622021 be adopted. Is there a seconder to this? Okay, Counselor Proctor and seconding and we're at adoption. So I'm simply calling a question at this point. So all those in favor? And opposed, knowing that Counselor Savage has opposed, the bylaw is adopted. Okay. That moves us on to nine B. So this time through to Deputy Director Richardson, if you want to bring in the applicants. And so we have a development variance permit application for 7360 Venture Road. What I suggest is we'll just get the motion on the floor. And then if staff has anything to do or anything to introduce this with, then we'll hear that at that time. And then also just to give us a little bit about the process because we do have the applicants in our Zoom. So I'll simply make the motion that development variance permit number DVP 22 dash one for 7360 Venture Road be approved to relax the side yard setback from three meters to 1.5 meters to construct a carriage house. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Savage. So we have it on the floor now. So I'm going to ask Director Limshu if there's anything further to introduce this. Because he also did have an additional nine, or sorry, additional eight items added to our agenda this evening. And at this point, Director Limshu, if I'll let you introduce it and then share your screen as necessary. And then and then if there's any procedure you want us to follow with respect to the applicants. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Swain. If you bear with me, I'm just gonna share my screen. Sorry about that.
We'll forgive you this evening. You have successfully shared your screen.
Okay, perfect. So the application before is this for development variance permit. And as outlined by Mayor Swain, the purpose of development variance permit is to reduce the minimum side yard setback for a proposed carriage house. So what you see before you is a copy of the site plan, and I'm just gonna expand it a bit. Here we go. So this plan will seem familiar to council, hopefully, because the applicants did apply for a variance about a year ago. At that point in time, the request for the relaxation was for the front yard setback and council at that time granted the variance for the relaxation of the front yard. At the time of the application, the proposed building was meant to be a a secondary building. So the side yard setback was not in question because under the zoning bylaw, the side yard setback for a secondary building is 1.5 meters. The applicants have since decided that they wish to construct a carriage house in the same location as was previously presented. The issue here is that the side yard setback for a carriage house is three meters, not 1.5 meters. That's the request for a relaxation in the side yard setback at this point in time. So just to be clear, we're only discussing a relaxation to the side yard setback to accommodate the carriage house. We're not discussing the front yard setback as that variance was granted through the last development variance permit. I believe it was development variance permit 21 dash 20, 20, or sorry, dash two, 21 dash two. Any questions?
Through the councillors, any questions? Through to Director Limshu. Okay, hearing none. And then in terms of process with the applicant, if there's anything to outline there, Director Limshu?
Certainly, the applicant is online to answer any questions that that I'm not able to to answer at this point in time.
Okay. So through to council, we're on to discussing this development variance permit. So I'll take a speaker's list and we'll go from there. So Counselor Savage, if you wish.
Thank you. With respect, this is absolutely a no for me. The original variance we gave was obtained for a different use. We were told clearly it was for a garage. And use really matters. So now a carriage house property, possibly a rental property or short term rental property, B and B type building is taking its place, but still using the original variance. So I not only have a problem with the side variance, I now have a problem with the original front setback variance. There's an enormous difference between a garage, which I spoke very much in favor of the last time, and a dwelling unit where you've got people living in it and being so close to both the neighboring property. A carriage house can go up two stories. It can be on top of a garage. So I feel it's inappropriate to have something that big looming over a neighbor's property. It's with good reason that it's three meters setback. And this is just inviting conflict. This is why you have setbacks, that it's to prevent conflict. So it's inviting conflict with the neighbor, whether that owners change over time, or doesn't matter what the current owner feels about it. Owners change. And it it prevents conflict. And it's even worse where it's now going to be living quarters so close to what's already a narrow lane. That's just begging for conflict, parking conflict, people parking, going to the beach so close to a residential unit is just not, not a good idea. So I'm certainly going to oppose the side setback. And then I'll ask Mayor Swain what the appropriate procedure would be to revoke the or rescind the original variance for the road setback. It sounds like that would be a separate motion after we deal with this one. Or we could do it as an amendment. I'll ask that when everyone else has spoken. But that's, those are my thoughts now. It's inappropriate for residential unit removing setbacks, both side and front. Thank you.
Okay, so as a seconder, I'm gonna forego my turn at this point, but I see that Counselor Proctor, you have your hand up.
Through you, Mayor, to either the applicant or Director Limshu. I somehow have the impression that you own the lot next to. Is that correct? Do you own the lot that you're asking the variance that's next to?
Yes, we do. We own that. We we own the lots on either side.
So it would, you would only be infringing on yourself, so to speak.
Exactly, yeah.
If anyone, what like, I, I don't know, infringement's a little bit judgmental. I really, I, that was the wrong word for me to use.
And we don't intend to Airbnb it, that's for sure. We are very opposed to short term rental in Lanceville, and we have actually been to council for that same issue. It's more of a place for our kids to hang out as they grow into teenagers and we just need them out of our tiny house. So and then we were thinking long term, after they're gone away to university, we would use it as a long term rental for perhaps like an empty nester, like it would not be a disturbance.
And it's, it's, thank you. Thank you very much for your explanation. And I think I heard, I walk down Venture all the time when I walk from my house to the beach, which I do, you know, more than once a week. So it seems to me that almost every building along that street is a variant. And there are some little cottages that are right butted up right next to the road as it is. And when I, I'm, I think I've walked by and seen stakes, and I think that you placed it in such a way so that it avoided taking some trees down. Am I correct?
Yes, there is a beautiful mature cedar that is directly behind it, and that's why we applied for the initial variance. And now if we just could move the structure a little bit to the east, we could squeeze a car in beside the home so that we would have parking beside the home and avoid parking on the road.
And so then, since you own the property next door, anybody that you sold it to would see the existing building and if they didn't care for it, just not buy the property if they didn't want it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I see that Counselor Wilson is next. Go ahead.
Just looking at the additional information, there's a proposed garage drawing that to me doesn't look like a two story building. Is your intention just to build a one story building on the as a carriage house?
Um, yes, we can only go to six meters. So that is our plan. So that's like one and a half stories. I think we would do, try and do a little sleeping loft, but it wouldn't be full height at the top. So we're thinking very kind of kid based fun here. It wouldn't be a proper carriage house, really.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, any additional speakers? I was just gonna, up at the top of page 131 of our agenda, just indicate that it says right in the staff report, the size of the carriage house would be the same as previously presented for the secondary structure. And then earlier in the staff report, it just indicates, you know, the difference between a secondary structure is one that you can't live in. And then this carriage house is something you can live in. So just pointing that out for council's benefit. So yeah, that's all I have at this time. So through the rest of council, any additional speakers on this item? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Savage.
Yes, I just wanted to point out when we gave the variance the last time, the use was changed. Yet apparently that variance still sticks. So through to, through Chair to Staff, is there anything preventing the applicant from getting the variance now and then changing the design of the carriage house at a later date? So in other words, this variance is not designed to specific, it's to allow a carriage house of any design. Is that not correct?
That's correct. The very, the variance that's being considered right now is specific to the side yard setback. It's not specific to the height of the building, the look of the building. The, you know, the the applicant will be required to submit building plans when they're ready to construct.
Yeah, I, thank you. I always go with the property, not the, not the person. And I know that property, it's a beautiful property, and I fully supported the garage for design purposes. But now the use has changed. It's just completely different. And regardless of whether the owner also owns the property next door is irrelevant, you always vote on the land use, not the person. And if it sells, there's two different owners there. You're creating conflict by not following setbacks. That's the whole point of the setback. And as well, as I say, it's very inappropriate. I wouldn't have voted for it to begin with had I known that I approved it for a garage. And now I'm finding out it was also for a carriage house. So it's just inappropriate to have a living quarter so close to the road right of way. So it's for those reasons, with all due respect to the family, that I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, I see Counselor Proctor, your hand is back up. So go ahead.
I have another question. Thank you, Mayor. Through you to staff. I'm wondering if it, I don't know if I can ask this question correctly, but the difference between a carriage house and a garage, if I put a bathroom in my garage, is it a carriage house then? Like, what? I got, I know a lot of people who build what they used to call them bungies in the backyard for their teenage kids to hang out in. And they did have a toilet in them because teenagers go to the bathroom. You know, so like, what, what's the difference between, is it just because it has a bathroom in it that it's a carriage house or?
Through the mayor to the council. Effectively, a carriage house is a dwelling unit. And so it consists of the basic features that you typically find in a dwelling unit, which includes not just a bathroom, but there'd be living areas. So there'd be kitchen and typically kitchen is 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 the the big one. You know, I mean, there, there are tons of examples where you have a workshop or a garage with a bathroom in it. You know, but it's not, it's not meant to to live in year round. A carriage house is is different in that, yeah, it is constructed and designed for year round living at the end of the day. And it includes all those features I just mentioned. So you've got your your bathroom and your kitchen and your your living space.
Well, in all due respect, I do have neighbors to get kicked out and have to stay in the garage. Just saying, it happens. You're in Lanceville. Okay, I, I, those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
Any additional speakers? Counselor Gusselbrecht, go ahead.
Having had many teenagers myself, I think it's a brilliant idea to stick them out in another dwelling. So if things get too wild, they only burn that one down and not your house. So I'll, I'll be voting in favor of this one. Thank you.
Okay, and hearing or seeing no other speakers, I will move to calling the question. So all those in favor? And opposed, knowing that Counselor Savage has opposed, the DVP permit is granted. Okay, so we're on to 12A of our agenda. So this is Mayor and Council verbal updates. So we can start with, I guess, top of the screen, Counselor Wilson. And then Counselor Gusselbrecht.
Thank you. I just wish to report that myself, as well as Counselor Savage and Proctor, as well as the mayor, attended the Association of Vancouver Island and community and coastal community convention this weekend in Victoria. From my point of view, it was a huge success. Talking, you had the chance to talk to numerous mayors and other councillors and the main, the main point that I got is the problem of housing, lack of housing, lack of affordable housing. And it's in every community, whether it's a small community like Sayward or or up at the top of the island or the bigger communities, it's a huge problem that's gonna cause that all the communities are asking for both federal and provincial help to try and deal with this problem. Uh, there were some very interesting resolutions, uh, just to, to, uh, to clarify that there's, within the uni, the Union of BCU municipalities, there's five different regions. One of those regions is the AVIC, and there's four other regions throughout the province. So at this convention, certain resolutions were made by the members, which will then, most of them go on to the UBCM convention this September in Whistler. Uh, some go directly to the Federation of, uh, Canadian Municipalities, some go directly to the, um, to the government. But of those resolutions, some of the more interesting ones were a resolution for shipbreaking facilities and a registry in B.C. to deal with, uh, all the derelict vessels which are up and down the B.C. coast. Uh, another resolution was, uh, that, that the province utilize its, uh, legislation called the Integrated Pest Management Act uh, to limit the use of pesticides within the community drinking water supply area and the water sheds. Uh, a further, uh, resolution was to implement a tiny home building standard. And this was a resolution that was put forward by one of the, uh, by the director, actually, of our RDN, to, that the province come up with a set of standards to accommodate tiny homes to, once again, accommodate the housing crisis. A further, uh, resolution was, uh, enforcement tools for short-term rentals. Uh, the, the debate on this was that the short-term rentals are taken away from the long-term rental market, once again adding to the housing crisis. Uh, uh, another interesting resolution was the, uh, cannabis taxation revenue sharing. Uh, municipalities, uh, only source of revenue aside from the occasional grant, which you can't, uh, uh, depend on, you can't predict, is the taxpayer. So with the increase in the use of cannabis, uh, the municipalities are asking that they get a share of that taxation revenue. Uh, that was a very important resolution that'll be going forward. Uh, so, um, once again, um, I think I learned a lot, met a lot of the different, uh, mayors and council people, all dedicated, uh, elected members trying to do the best for their communities. Thank you.
Okay, and then through to councillor Proctor.
Thank you. I, um, also attended the AVICC. I found it, um, very interesting and very worthwhile. And I would just like to reiterate what councillor Gusselbrock just said. Every person we talked to from every municipality indicated they have a housing shortage. Some of the smaller communities in, um, in our region on Vancouver Island and on the Sunshine Coast have a housing shortage because they have a labor shortage. They can't get people to commute to their, uh, communities to build homes for them. Uh, some communities have a land shortage, some communities have a labor shortage, everyone has a housing shortage. I attended a really interesting workshop on affordable housing. The lady offered, uh, really, I thought, very useful explanation of the difference in the definition of affordable housing and non-market housing. And, and they are two different entities, and sometimes we use those terms interchangeably. That becomes confusing. But the, one of the most interesting parts of the, um, convention for me, view of the resolution process, is the resolution process is really interesting, and it is a way for us to provide grassroots input into government. But right now, the resolution process is so onerous that it's hard for anyone, in my opinion, to really wrap their brain around. You know, when, when we end up, um, going through resolutions at the AVICC and then forward them to the UBCM, and at the UBCM, it's a book of resolutions that we need to go through, and it becomes so onerous that I, I, you know, there's pros and cons, but in my mind, some of those resolutions lose their meaning because there's so many. So if I were following municipal politics in the next few years, that, uh, review of the resolution process is something that I would want to follow because I think it's an important way to get grassroots influence. And, um, it certainly needs to, uh, a review and some looking at so that our grassroots voices are heard appropriately. That's all I have to report on this week.
Uh, through to councillor Savage.
Yes, thank you. Yes, it was a, uh, good convention, absolutely. Uh, one of the things, I talked to, uh, so many different councillors, mayors there, and got a flavor of what they thought about Minister Eby's proposal to, uh, take away from local government some of the zoning authority. And, uh, so got a good flavor there. I met with the head of UBCM, who, uh, put out a report and is opposing the minister's idea to take over some zoning. And this report was an excellent report, which disputed a lot of what Minister Eby was, uh, saying. I spoke with the mayor of Oak Bay, who had spoken with Minister Eby and is planning a meeting, uh, next week with him. Uh, and there was actually a resolution, a motion that passed, which was for members, uh, to oppose what Mr. Eby was proposing and to support keeping the authority of zoning, uh, all of zoning, uh, within the municipalities, within local government. So that was interesting. Other than that, it's just endless, uh, people you meet there. It's very worthwhile. It's a heck of a lot of work. Uh, you're on your feet all day, and then in the evening, you get the fun of more networking and so on over dinner. For example, I sat with the councillor of Highlands, who told me all about, uh, District of Highlands, who told me all about their tree bylaw, which is on our agenda tonight. And I was very impressed with the way they've approached it, so might be something to consider. Uh, talked to B.C. assessment there, that was great. Even ran into our old C.A.O., Brad McCray from our old Lanceville C.A.O. So, uh, anyway, it's, uh, really illuminating hearing about all the issues of other, uh, municipalities and their solutions. And just as a quick follow-up, just a quick question through to staff, please, while I have the opportunity. And, uh, through to Director Coates, uh, just wondering, will residents, through the April 13th public hearing, will residents be able to come and go in the council chambers? So for example, if residents have finished speaking and leave, can they be replaced by others, uh, who would like a chance to speak?
Uh, that is not the recommended process. So, uh, it's an electronic public hearing that allows for more people to participate in a hearing. It's very important that if someone is going to speak at a hearing, that they have the ability to watch and hear and see. It's not an intention that people line up and then rotate through. If we did that, they would be not getting the opportunity that they have. Our experience has been that, you know, we took a close look at public hearings over the last 10 years in Lanceville, and the highest number of speakers we ever had was 21. Uh, this room could accommodate 21 people who wish to speak. It could accommodate 20 more than that. Out of, uh, 25 public hearings that we looked at, 18 of them had three or less speakers. I'm not saying that will be the case. Next week, we are anticipating that there will be a lot of people interested in speaking. We've already had a lot of people register to speak, uh, through the, uh, electronic public hearing option. So no, I feel that it would, uh, not provide the intended purpose if people rotated through. We could be challenged on, on that. So the intent, uh, the way we've advertised it, it is an electronic hearing. We've asked for, uh, we provided an opportunity for those who are absolutely unable to go to a friends and watch it electronically and participate there, or to have somebody help them, uh, register them, uh, to do it, uh, through Zoom. And then if they prefer to do it with a phone, but they would still need to be watching the live stream to know what was happening so that they can speak. And so we can, or the chair can call on them when, when they wish. So they do need to, if they are attending at municipal hall, they're attending here, uh, to speak. And we've advertised it that it is limited seating. And that's about all I can say on that.
Yeah, so if, but if residents, that's their choice, if they choose to leave once they've spoken, uh, will others be permitted in, or will the doors be locked at 6 o'clock, or what's the process?
Our doors are never locked. But we do have, uh, local assistant to the fire marshal, or sorry, fire commissioner, L.A.F.C. Local assistant to the fire commissioner, I gotta get my acronyms right, uh, who does establish what the capacity is on this room. So, uh, as we've discussed before, the more, uh, staff and council members who are not in this room, that allows more seats for the public to come in. And who, uh, but we do have advertised it as is providing an opportunity for members of the public who cannot, are unable to participate electronically.
So, but if, so can a person arrive at 8 o'clock if their seat's empty?
I, I already said, the doors are unlocked. Uh, people coming in will be, uh, signing in to say that they're speaking. And then they will sit in the audience and be called up when their turn. And as I said, the L.A.F.C. has a duty to ensure that we don't have people standing, we don't have people in, in the hall, uh, lining up. I, I think it would be ill-advised, uh, for people to come in and rotate through. It's, it's, uh, that is not the purpose. The purpose is for people to come in at the beginning and listen to the hearing. They have to be there and listen to it in order to speak.
Yeah, and if I may please, with the, uh, with their speaking order, will people know approximately when, where they are on the list of orders? So they will know like with the start or near the end of the meeting, or?
No.
They will not know, so they just will wait until their name's called?
That's correct. So it, the, the, the hearing is managed by the chair, the mayor, and we have people who will come in, uh, be called on to speak, uh, through the electronic means. And then there will be sign-up sheets where people sign up. And then as we've done in other public hearings, uh, when the chair is ready to have another speaker, we give them that name and that person lines up and is ready to go.
So if they're at home, though, for three and a half hours, and they go to the bathroom and miss their name being called, then they miss their chance to, to speak? I would find that difficult. You kept my point.
So if, if I may, I'll just interject. Um, you know, if there's further questions, councillor Savage, probably best to, um, submit those, and then those can just go up in the district site. But in terms of the chairing of the public hearing, and I believe I've done this in the past, it's, you know, when we have this speakers list, um, just in terms of efficiency, I'm not just gonna be reading one person's name at a time. Usually we queue up the next speaker or two so that they're ready to go, and hopefully they are somewhat paying attention to, to what's going on, but well. And I don't know, maybe through to Director Coates, is there a way of showing that list periodically throughout the presentation? Or, or sharing a screenshot just so individuals have an idea where they sit on that list? Sure. Okay, just thought I'd throw it out there. So is there anything further, councillor Savage?
Uh, no, that's fine for now. I'll follow up with other questions after. Thank you.
Okay, and just continuing on with the, um, updates. So yes, I attended the AVICC as well. Um, it's an excellent networking opportunity for councils. Um, and, you know, it builds, you know, this builds and, and, uh, towards the attendance of UBCM as well. So where, um, again, you know, you're building these relationships with other, uh, councils and councillors, mayors, what have you, and even C.A.O.s and so forth. And, um, it's great to have a lot of sharing of ideas and, and experiences and so forth. It's, uh, sometimes in local government, you can feel like you're very alone, but when you go to these conventions, which have, um, especially in-person conventions, um, which have been sorely lacking because of COVID, um, it kinda gives you, you know, it gives you some breath of fresh air, I suppose, um, in terms of moving forward with our council business. So, um, there's lots of good, great takeaways from the convention. Um, yes, there's lots of resolutions, and, um, there are built-in efficiencies around that, thank goodness. I, they, we do take a lot of the resolutions that are presented in, in a block. So it's essentially one vote for many resolutions that are endorsed by the AVIC executive and, um, just moves things along a lot quicker. And the ones that are maybe a little bit more contentious, or the AVICC executive doesn't, um, endorse, those ones, uh, go to, um, for debate, uh, with the delegates that are present. So you got your con mic, your pro mic, and then things get debated with the delegates that are there, which sometimes it can be a very interesting debate. Um, for myself, I attended the housing, uh, workshop. That was an excellent, uh, excellent speaker and, uh, you know, gives, uh, gave a lot of good information and then managed to, um, well, I didn't get to do the afternoon session because I had to go to a minister meeting with, uh, Minister Josie Osborne, just regarding, uh, watersheds. And, and I was with, uh, other mayors and, uh, regional district chairs. And, um, I'll probably share more on that at a later date. But, um, yeah, again, it's a, it's an excellent convention. It's, um, it's definitely worth the time and effort to attend these. And, uh, and again, it's, uh, it's all about the networking and sharing of ideas and, and not reinventing, uh, the wheel, so to speak, and, uh, with different things. And even with my motion that comes after this, again, it's not always about reinventing the wheel. It's trying to find something that works and, and just borrow or steal it. So, and, and apply it to, at our own local municipality, so. That concludes my updates for this evening. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, 12B, which is a bylaw to provide for the protection of and preservation of trees. It's my recommendation. Um, the whereas is, or for council's, uh, um, review, and I'll just cut right to the chase. And so therefore it be resolved that staff prepare for council's consideration of bylaw to provide for the protection and preservation of trees on parcels of land greater than one hectare in size. Is there a secondary to the motion? So seconded by councillor Savage. Discussion on the motion, so I did in my little, um, update there, mention that sometimes we should be reinventing the wheel, but instead borrow or steal, um, from, from other municipalities. And a lot of the wording from this, uh, motion or the where, the whereas clauses come from North Sanich. Um, that's where I borrow a lot of the wording. I reviewed, uh, several, um, tree retention bylaws. And, um, just trying to get a sense of what else is out there. And we've done this before. Um, at the beginning of the term, we had a, an attempt to, um, create a tree bylaw or a tree retention bylaw, but, um, it was unsuccessful. And, and I thought it, it's about time that, um, take another stab at it, but maybe from a different angle here. Uh, one of the concerns, um, with the previous attempt at, uh, developing a tree retention bylaw was, um, is we didn't want everybody running out and starting up their chainsaws and deforesting Lanceville in one clear swoop. So, um, that, that's why in the motion itself, it does state for parcels greater than one hectare. So I, I don't know what the exact math is or estimate is, but this probably only applies to, you know, less than 10% of properties in Lanceville, maybe even fewer. And it's really targeting, um, future, uh, developable lands and, uh, or lands that have potential for development. Um, we will be working on a parks and trails, uh, master plan. And, uh, you know, and with respect to the planning process, it'd be nice to, to try and preserve, um, what forested areas we have left in Lanceville. Especially with the larger tracts of land that likely could be, um, trans, there, where there could be a transfer of land in terms of the, uh, parkland with the development, um, applications. So, um, again, this is, uh, you know, from, in talking with C.A.O. Campbell, that the bylaws fairly well, or for, for the most part, is written. Um, it just needs to have some, uh, new numbers inserted and some tweaks done to it for council's consideration. So, um, again, I think this is, uh, perhaps a better step in the right direction because it doesn't over-regulate, um, what the average homeowner has to do. In fact, there's really no regulation for the average homeowner unless you have a property that's greater than two and a half acres in size. And, uh, and what I envision in the future, if this, this is considered, and, um, is that, you know, council shouldn't be in a position of just flat-out stopping, um, somebody from clearing their land if that's what they choose to do. But I think it would at least open the dialogue up so we can have some input into perhaps what part of the land should be left for future, um, use. Uh, should an application- Should an application come before council? So, again, just based on what's happened here in the past in Lanceville, again, with developable land, I would like to see council have a, some input into what can remain in various areas. So that's my introduction. So, through to the secondary, and then I'll open up to the rest of the council.
Yes, thank you. I had problems with the last tree bylaw. I felt it was quite heavy-handed, but I'm certainly willing to revisit it. And the, one of the reasons why is I had such a great chat with the District of Highlands councillor. She said, oh, this tree law's been around for a long time in, in the Highlands, and it doesn't bother anyone. And it's because it's so practical and reasonable. There's many, many big acreages and treed properties in the Highlands. And there's such things as you can take out X number of trees on your property per year. It only applies to trees a certain diameter and bigger. So for people like me on acreage, where you're forever trimming alder saplings to prevent them going up into the wires, it's actually a requirement from hydro that, you know, this wouldn't affect my ability on my property at all from what I heard from them at Choson. And another real key to it is she even looked it up when I was there. It's only $25 for a permit to take out a tree. So, you just won't be against it, or people won't quietly take it out and hope they don't get caught because for only $25, I mean, good heavens, that's, that's nothing to do it properly. And the whole impetus for it, I think, is we saw what it was like when there was three big acreages that were clear-cut in preparation for development. And I see the main purpose of this is to encourage those with developable land to not clear-cut. It's a far more successful development when you work with the district in terms of, you know, what could be proposed for parkland and so on. So for parkland, you're getting a treed area. So, I just think it's best. And so I would strongly urge staff to have a look at the Highlands Tree Bylaw, which is one catered to rural, semi-rural area like Lanceville. And the other thing is to investigate, if I may suggest, is to see if there's a density penalty or some sort of penalty for anyone who clear-cuts before they apply for a development. So, so I think at this point, that's all we're doing is just forwarding it to staff to try again. And I'm absolutely willing to do that on, to err on the side of preserving some of our lovely forests, but without being the least bit onerous on property owners. Where on acreages, removing smaller trees is a regular thing. So, thank you.
Okay, so I have Counselor Proctor and then Counselor Gesselbruck.
Thank you. I have a few questions for staff. I'm wondering if we have the capacity right now to staff a permitting system if, for a tree bylaw?
Sorry, worship, I couldn't take my mute off. No, we don't. And I've talked to the mayor about that already. And that's why the resolution had changed from a permitting system to approval system.
Oh, okay. And, you know, I read the Nanaimo Tree Bylaw, and I was quite impressed with it. But then I realized that they have an enormous amount of staff. They have an arborist on staff that went around and designated certain trees. And the arborist is involved in the permitting system, and they have a staff for the permits. So I had a question about, so thank you for answering that question because I know it is a huge concern in this community hiring staff costs money. And my neighbors are concerned about how much staff gets hired. So if a tree bylaw requires staff, I don't think it would have much public support. I'm wondering if maybe Director Limshu could answer this question? How many lots we have in Lanceville that are greater than one hectare?
So, Director Limshu, I can, I can barely hear you in chambers, so.
My apologies. How's that?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so currently we have a total of 1,710 parcels, total, for all of Lanceville. And of that, 251 parcels are one hectare or larger. Now, what's interesting about that is the fact that those 251 parcels actually make up approximately 81% of the land base within the municipality.
That is interesting. That's interesting. Well, when I look out my door, and my, thank you for that. When I look out my door and I see the big trees that are, they're the landmark of, of my neighborhood. And when I compare my neighborhood to neighborhoods, say, on the south end of Nanaimo, the difference is the big trees. So, and no one in my neighborhood has more than a quarter acre lot. So it, all those trees could come down, and the complexity of this neighborhood would be totally different. We would look like, well, I don't really want to make that kind of comparison. But it wouldn't be nice. We all like the trees. So, I do have a lot of questions about this. I'm wondering if we're being discriminating? Like, we, we, the trees on five acres, on two and a half acres, we don't want cut down, but these trees here, we don't care that much for, and they can come down? I, I don't know. I have a lot of questions about that. And then I'm wondering if I lived on one hectare parcel, and I was farming, and I needed to cut some trees down so that my garden would have more sun, how, is, is there anyone on staff that can answer how this tree law would affect my ability to change part of my, my own property so that I could grow a garden?
Your worship, to answer that, it would have to be an application to the municipality if it's over an hectare.
And then who in the municipality would make that decision? What if the trees get to come down or not?
It would probably be a discussion between the Director of Planning and myself.
So, I have another question. If I had ALR land and I needed to cut trees down because I was gonna put in a, like, let's say, a strawberry market garden. There used to be one here in Lanceville that was very popular. Would I be allowed to cut the trees down on the ALR land without getting permission from the district?
Can you answer that, Frank?
Well, as councils are aware, ALR lands are under, are governed by another entity, the Agricultural Land Commission. And certainly they have their rules and policies. And the whole point of the ALR lands is to encourage agricultural use and activities on those lands. So certainly, you know, to prevent someone from actively farming their property. And, you know, whether you're, you're clearing the land to grow crops or you're clearing the land to put greenhouses on it, you know, it's, it's sort of in conflict with, well, not sort of. It is in conflict with the whole point of designated lands, ALR. You know, similarly, private-managed forests, you know, they're governed by a separate rule, separate rules and regulations as well. And so, you know, as long as they are adhering to those provincial regulations, they do have the right to, like, I'm talking about the, the mosaics of the world. They do have the ability to continue harvesting those lands as long as they're in compliance with the rules and regulations set in place to manage, you know, private-managed forests.
Thank you. I, I think I have a lot of questions about this. And I'm really especially question the, the limit on the size of the lot. And what I would like to see is a staff report explaining the viability of any sort of tree bylaw system and what we need, the legalities of what we need to consider. I don't, I, I feel like, like we're discriminating against some trees, and that's just not nice. It's like the trees on the quarter acre lots aren't important to us, but the trees on the two acre lots are important to us. I, I personally love all trees. Anyway, I would prefer to see a staff report on what their recommendations for how we should take a look at this. And I, I also, I would like to remind all of council that this is the second time that a tree law, bylaw's been brought forth. The council before us turned one down, we turned one down. A tree bylaw is not one of our strategic priorities. It's late in our term. I, I would need to know a lot more of the ins and outs about this and read some staff recommendations. Thank you.
Counselor Gesselbruck.
Yes. I agree with Counselor Proctor, and I think referring this back to staff for that form of a report would be good. This has come before the last council, it's come before this council. It's, we didn't proceed with it. I'm looking at our council, council strategic priorities for 2021 to 2023. It's not a strategic priority. We're late in the term. I suspect there's a lot of controversy within the community on such a bylaw. I personally would like to see this go as an item at the next election for a referendum. And I'm gonna ask through you chair to staff what that would look like. What would we need to do to put it as a referendum item?
Director Coats, could you answer that?
Yes, well, generally, it would require a bylaw so that then you could pose a question on the ballot that says, do you support council adopting bylaw XYZ? So that people voting on it are making an informed decision. You can't have a sort of open-ended question on a ballot, and you can't just say, do you think there should be a tree bylaw? Because they, they don't know what they're voting on. The other thing to remember too is that, you know, there's referendums, and then there's referendums. And it's a, it's, it would be a general interest question. It wouldn't be a binding question on council. So, there doesn't need to be a concern that, you know, there's a new council getting elected too, and, and gee, maybe they didn't put forward this thing on the ballot, and are they gonna be bound by it? So. And we'd need it to know pretty soon.
Is there any additional follow-ups? Counselor Gesselbruck? Okay. Counselor Proctor, see your hands back up again? I have no idea.
Counselor Proctor's muted. She's muted.
Sorry, I was just using my calculator because the figures that Director Limshu gave us, we have 1,710 parcels, and only 251 of them are one hectare or larger. So, it, the first thing that comes to my mind, that if we put this to a referendum, we're asking the entire population to vote on the trees on 15% of the property owner's property. I, I don't, I, that, I, I'm sorry, but that doesn't sit very well with me. If we were asking the entire population to vote on a tree referent, it's a tree bylaw that's gonna affect everybody's property, that's, that's reasonable. But we would be asking 85% of the population, if they think it's okay, that the people that own bigger properties than them can't cut trees down, but they can cut down whatever they want. To me, that's a moral dilemma. In fact, that's the, that explains the moral dilemma of this whole bylaw, the way it's written. Not against protecting trees, I'm not saying that. I just think that it needs a little bit deeper thought for how we want to go about that as a community in a fair way, so that all trees are treated equal and all property owners are treated equal. So I would prefer to refer this back to staff for a staff report that takes into consideration all of property owners and all our beautiful trees. Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, so we have a, so are you making a referral motion then, Counselor Proctor?
Yes, I'm making a motion to refer this back to staff for more information.
And sorry, could you just give some detail of what the information is you're seeking staff to provide?
The impact of a tree bylaw? What sort of recommendations staff has on a tree bylaw? If there should be a lot size restriction, a tree size restriction? What sort of things we need to consider? And that dilemma that I just explained about 85% of the population having a voice for what the other 15% does with their land? It, it, I, to me, that's a moral dilemma. I don't, maybe just a math teacher problem, I don't know, but that's how I see it. So I would like staff's opinion on those issues.
Okay, and that, and that was seconded by Counselor Gesselbruck? So, discussion on the referral motion, so through to the mover and then to the secondary. So Counselor Proctor, is there anything further to add?
I don't really have anything further to add other than I would just like to, to have a report in front of me to refer to with some in, issues that have been researched in depth that I, you know, wasn't able to do since the time I saw this agenda item and this evening.
Through to Counselor Gesselbruck, is a secondary for referral motion?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, and noting Counselor Wilson, your hands up. So really just referring the reason for the referral and, and we don't really have a timeline on it, but that's basically it.
Those are all really good points. The only thing I'd like to do is, as far as providing staff, just to add to the referral motion is that could we figure out or learn what other, have staff provide a report, what other municipalities do that are close to Lanceville, like Parksville, Qualicum, Nanaimo, Ladysmith? That'd be, that'd be just, I think, beneficial as we find a solution for, for our trees.
Okay, and then Counselor Savage?
Yes, thank you. I think it's appropriate that staff get a little more feedback here. It's not fair to them just to come up with something. So, I've got a couple of suggestions I could say right now. And then if it's appropriate, Mayor Swain, if we could email in our suggestions over the next days for staff's consideration, if that's appropriate. But I would agree with referring it, but only if the staff gets the right sort of direction. And that direction is simply that I think Mayor Swain's ideas are in response to the failure of the previous bylaws. And that's limiting it to the larger acreages. I'm on one of those larger acreages. And to have a system where a certain number of trees can be taken down without a problem each year, that takes the, a lot of the problem away. And that basically, for me, all we're trying to do is prevent acreage, big acreages with future development, upcoming development, to prevent them from clear-cutting. That's my number one goal. Other than that, I find people's attitude towards trees is just fine. There's not a lot coming down. The forests are being retained, but development changes all that. So, that's what I would like to target. Thank you.
For myself, it's not too much to add. You know, we don't have a bylaw in front of us. So, you know, if it's council's will to get further information from staff with respect to what could be contained, and also to address some of the concerns that were raised this evening, that's, that's fine by me. The more information we can have in the, any, in the development of any bylaw is obviously beneficial. And crafting a well-rounded bylaw that achieves what we wanted to achieve. Yeah, so that's all stated this time. So I can support it being referred back to, to staff to provide a report. I think council is free to email staff, you know, with respect to any additional questions or what have you with respect to that, without guiding, guiding staff's hand too much. But it's just a matter of having that follow-up if there's anything else that, to be added, or if there's any additional queries with respect to what could be contained in a, in a tree and, or basically a tree protection pres- and, or basically a tree protection preservation by law. So unless there's anything further, I'll move to calling a question on the referral motion. Okay, here, oh, Counselor Proctor, you wish to speak again? I'm sorry, you're muted again.
Anxiously voting, sorry.
Okay, so I will move to call in question. All those in favor and opposed? That's carried unanimously, so that's referred back to staff. Last item is.
I'm sorry, point of privilege. I need a two minute break. I'm sorry.
Okay, so we'll resume at 8:15. Thank you. So we're calling recess at 8:15.
You heard him?
Okay, I'm calling this meeting back to order. Just wait for everybody's screens to come alive. I hope Counselor Wilson or Counselor Gusselbrecht can hear me. Called this meeting back to order. Thank you. All right, we're all back. Excellent. So that takes us on to 12C. So we have Village Self Development. Counselor Savage has a recommendation and just from where the resolution begins, please.
Okay, that a village South public hearing scheduled for April 13th, 2022 be postponed until the quality of the community's own land can be assessed. Drainage issues exacerbated by high density can be properly vetted and guaranteed and potential economic hardships for the community are resolved.
Okay, and do we have a secondary to this motion? Okay, I will second it. So through to Counselor Savage.
Yes, thank you. My main concern here is this land we're getting for the community services land. From my reading of the report, it's problematic land for building purposes. And this, this land is for a new municipal hall and community hall and possibly subsidized seniors housing. Why are we proceeding with this particular land for building when we're not 100% certain that what we're getting is not going to be very expensive to build on and problematic? And the letter we got today from Lukowicz was appreciated, but it says nothing. It doesn't add anything to what the report already says. And for example, in the report, it says, generally speaking, the properties contain areas of favorable ground condition for foundation support and areas of unfavorable ground conditions. These areas are roughly delineated in the attached drawing. Well, the unfavorable land is, almost perfectly matches the parkland we're getting and the commercial community service zone in the northwest corner. And for those of us that used to walk through there all the time decades ago, there was always ponds and marsh like setting. It's very wet in there. And then it says in the, in the next line that geotechnical challenges for the unfavorable areas include. And then it's a whole list of, of things where it says in C, however, within areas of unfavorable ground conditions, conventional shallow foundations are not considered suitable. The following are foundation options which may be used and so on. And it holds a whole list of, and these are expensive, and they're more expensive to do than your conventional building. And then H says, from a financial perspective, we suggest areas where thick deposits of clay have been encountered, such as those in the northwest region of the properties, be used for non-habitable uses, such as parkland or surface parking in order to avoid the costly foundation systems required for these subsurface conditions. So right there, it says it's going to be costly. And then it's got on J, it would be desirable for basement slabs to be at least 0.6 meters above the predicted high groundwater level. Well, that means no basements, no underground parking in some of the northwest area where the pits have already shown there's heavy seepage to very heavy water seepage close to the surface there. And the actual pits, we've got heavy seepage 2.35 meters down, heavy seepage 2.3 meters down. These are different test pits. Heavy groundwater seepage 1.65 meters down and very heavy groundwater seepage in another pit, 1.4 meters. Now, these are four of the eight test pits right in the community service zone. So why are we accepting land that's going to be more difficult, more expensive, and possibly no basements or underground parking when we could be getting the proper land to build on? These unfavorable condition areas are just a small part of the, of the whole land. And if you're forced to build with no basement, that means all your utilities, your furnace, wiring, plumbing, and earthquake proofing and so on are not easily accessible. When you have them in a basement like at my house, you can just walk down, access them anytime you want, upgrade them and so on. When it's on a ground floor, you've got to start taking walls apart to get at the plumbing and where the studs meet the foundation and so on. So why are we accepting problematic land? And the reason I'm late in the game bringing this up, I had gone through the technical report in a cursory fashion at the start, but there's so many documents here. I didn't go through it thoroughly until a couple of weeks ago, and I was just astonished at all that I saw. Read the test.
Counselor Savage, you're at five minutes.
Thank you.
Actually, as a secondary, I'll just speak briefly to this at this point. You know, with respect to the, the motion as before us, you know, for myself, it's, in terms of postponing the, the public hearing, this is just something I'm not that interested in doing. I, I just think it's, it's a long time coming. I think it's something that we need to move forward on as a council and as a community to, to hear this application and, and see where we're going to go with it. However, with respect to the rest of the motion, you know, and this is perhaps a question through to staff, is it possible in the next, you know, few business days to get some kind of report or indication of what kind of, you know, cost or, or increases in cost could result in building on these lands? So if we were to do some kind of community rec center in the community services zone in northwest area, you know, how, what is the potential increase in costs of moving forward on that? And what are the other implications as have been suggested, like no, or really basement or underground parking areas? Or if, if we were to do something like that, what would be the additional costs and so forth? So really, my question through to staff is what, what would be, you know, realistic in terms of getting some kind of information back from staff with respect to the possible or probable or cost increases as a result of accepting these lands?
Your worship through the council, you know, that's a very, that's a very difficult request for staff to provide, you know, turn, you know, have a, provide an accurate report that would satisfy you in a short period of time. I mean, the fact of the matter is, having stepped into this process sort of midstream, you know, I'm still not sure what it is that, what Lansville wants on that site. Is it a rec center? Is it a municipal hall? You know, are we talking about a single floor building, a two story or three story building? You know, because all those things will impact the kind of construction and potentially impact the, the cost. With respect to the actual site itself, you know, I suspect if you want more detailed analysis, and, and I'll preface this by saying that I'm not a geotechnical engineer, but I would expect that the geotechnical consultants would need to get in there and perhaps do more drilling and testing to accurately determine, you know, what is the, the subsurface conditions in the, in a specific development area to determine, okay, well, you know, if you do this, then you have to do this kind of, you have to, you design your, your footings and your foundations accordingly. And then again, it goes back to, okay, what is it that we're actually building on that site? You know, and that again will affect the cost associated with construction on the property. But, you know, to, to turn, turn that kind of a report and analysis around in a fairly short period of time, you know, it, I, I don't think we'll, we'll be able to do that.
Your worship, council did receive, I'm hoping they received the two Lukowicz reports that came out to, I think, a couple of days ago. I think they were sent to council dealing with a further analysis of the site.
Okay. Again, just, you know, through the rest of the council, I will continue on. But just again, keeping the bait limited to what's in front of us and, and not debating the merits of the actual development application. So through to the rest of the council, so Counselor Proctor, go ahead.
I have a few questions. It, it, it's my understanding that we were at the UBCM as a council together and we attended a workshop. I think that all of us can remember being there about small community workshop. And it was Vanderhoof, I believe, who put on a presentation about how they made a sports hub, a recreation hub in their town. And we all were really taken by that idea. And so staff has used our input from that workshop to create a recreation hub in this plan. And the logical place to put it is on the green clay. So there's that. Then the land is, the developers offered to build a playing field and off the top of my head, I don't know, it's more than a million dollars, and has donated the land that we could build a community center on eventually if we wanted to. But a new community center would be a multi-million dollar project. I, this, this community does not have multi-million dollars to build a new community center at this point. So we're debating something that's way off in, in the future. Am I, am I correct on that, Counselor? I mean, CAO Campbell?
Yes.
And I wouldn't even want to hazard a guess of what a nice community center would, and I'm sure that everybody in Lansville would love a nice community center. I personally would like a lap pool, but I don't know if we're ever going to afford that as a community. Okay, I have a further question. I can look out the back window that you see blurred behind me on the screen here, and I can see the holes they dug to find the blue clay. And I can tell everybody that's wondering, it really did look blue when they first dug it up. It's very interesting. I almost got a little, tried it as a mask, but I, I decided, no, that was not, not in my purview to do. But I, I, I'm just, I'm thinking if the blue clay is, I could throw a rock, and I can't throw rocks very far, and hit the blue clay, what are the chances that there's blue clay all through this neighborhood? I'm thinking pretty high. And I don't know if you know Director Limshu, but it, was this neighborhood tested before the homes were built for things like blue clay? I think our house was built like between 75 and 80, 1975 and 1980.
My apologies, I'm not aware of the soil conditions on which your, your home was built. But you know, but to your point, the clay doesn't recognize property lines. So, you know, you're, you know, you're, you're, your point about the, the clay seam extending beyond the, the, the subject lands is quite valid.
Thank you. Okay, that's the only question I have, and I'm sorry, my fam, one of my family members is locked out of the house. So I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting for less than a minute to go let them in. They're frantic.
Okay, Counselor Gusselbrecht, go ahead.
No, simply, I remember that same discussion and the example of Vanderhoof. And it seems to me in that discussion, we all agreed that the recreation facilities that would be a, a community amenity from the developer would be located in that northwest corner close to the school. Because we've seen in many other communities that, for example, in, in our own, in Nanaimo, McGurr soccer and softball fields were built right next to Dover Bay High School. And they get quite a bit of use from the local high school students. So it seems to me that that's where we want to build. Another interesting point is that blue clay is the, one of the major ingredients in facial treatments. I had a case where the, the value of blue clay was somewhere in the vicinity of $50 to $100 a pound. So maybe the district can make some extra money excavating that blue clay. In any event, the, the, the technical report prepared by a geotechnical expert simply identifies some of the issues in that area. It doesn't say something can't be built. It doesn't, anything could be more costly, but we have no idea. But it certainly doesn't preclude building. And, you know, to get a playing field there and some of the other community amenities, I, I don't think is a reason. I, I don't think is a reason for us to delay the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, additional speakers on this item? Our first time? Okay, hearing none. Any additional speakers or before I call the question? Okay, go ahead, Counselor Savage.
Yes, I have a few questions which are related to the motion, please. The, to, through Chair to Director Limshu, and this is related to the land we're getting. And considering the excellent job staff did in negotiating with the foothills, why is the district not pressing Village South to meet the 22% public parkland target of the OCP, which means 22% of the total site area, as verified by the developer rep Evan Peterson to the former planner, and not 22% of some new invented definition designed to give less parkland?
Counselor Savage, with respect to the nature of the question, I don't believe it's actually in order. Because really what we're dealing with here is the, the proposed lands, not the percentage of the, of the total lands as part of the application, which is probably best dealt with in a separate debate and likely after the public hearing.
Yeah, could I explain myself, please? The reason I'm bringing this up is because these extra almost two acres of land we're missing could be community service land on better land for building, less expensive, less wet.
So Counselor Savage, I don't believe it's part of the, you know, the motion that's before us. I understand what, you know, you're, you're introducing a different topic or, or debate in terms of the percentage and what could be the, you know, again, I just don't want to go down that rabbit hole. I think we need to stay on the motion that's in front of us, which has to do with the, the proposed lands being potentially problematic for, for future development by the district should we acquire such lands.
If I could rephrase the question then, please.
Well, we can make an attempt, but.
And that is that, is there a possibility, Director Limshu, of acquiring more land which is more appropriate for building?
I think that, where again.
Sorry, that's, that's my call through Director Coats. So again, Counselor Savage, it's not part of the motion with respect to bringing up negotiations and other parts of the, you know, considering, you know, other tax on, on this application. So I, I think it's best to stay on track with the, the motion that's before us, has been moved and seconded.
Yes, all right. Well, that was something that entails my concern of why I want to postpone it is because I have all these questions, some of them weeks old that I haven't had answered. So I would like them answered before it gets to a, a public hearing. So, well, the one that is related here, which is in my motion, is through Chair to Staff, is how will the district know if drainage water outflow has increased post-development? As I believe no recording of the current outflow of water has been done in different years and seasons, and I believe there are no consequences and no penalty if post-development outflow increases contrary to district policy. Is that correct?
Your worship, through you to council, it's, that's a requirement of the subdivision and development bylaw. In that subdivision, we ask the developer or require the developer to provide a fulsome report on drainage.
Yes, I understand that. However, if we're passing a, if we're looking at rezoning a property where there's a certain policy, how can that policy possibly be enforced when there's been no measurement of, of outflow? Therefore, it should be a requirement at the zoning stage to have this ascertained. It's not uncommon to have such things in the rezoning stage where, you know, people are, the former planner even said that would be the case, that a detailed liquid or a detailed stormwater management plan had to be done before the rezoning application came in.
So maybe we'll let CAO Campbell respond. And then, so through to CAO Campbell, if there's, if you have a response?
Your worship, through you to council, we follow the current bylaw, which is a requirement of providing the drainage plan, professional drainage plan at the appointed subdivision.
Okay. And, and just as a point of clarification, you know, I'm trying to listen carefully to what Counselor Savage is asking. And, and I think one thing just to clarify is, and, and staff can answer this if, if appropriate, does the district have any data on current outflows from, I guess it would be the, the pipe that goes out Jack's Road or even the Huddlestone? Do we measure any outflows of stormwater at this present time, or do we have any historical records?
I don't think so, but maybe Frank has more information on that.
Unfortunately, I can't answer that question at this point in time.
Okay, because again, I, I think it's, not that I'm going to get into a big debate on this, it's just ultimately, you know, I, I heard CAO Campbell's response, that stormwater management plan will be done at subdivision and so forth, and I can accept that. It's just, it, it does have that unknown of how do we know what would be an increase if we've never monitored it in, in the past? So I believe that's maybe what Counselor Savage was asking, but, yeah, Director Limshu?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that, you know, I, you know, certainly staff can review our records to see what data we do have. I mean, if I recall, you know, there was a, a culvert put installed under Lansville Road, and certainly there must have been some data collected at that point in time to determine what the, the pipe size would be or should be. So perhaps there's something there in, in those records. But it would require further investigation on staff's part to, to see whether or not that information does exist.
Sure, thank you. And, you know, for, and council is well aware of this, we've had a, a number of pieces of communication come through, or pieces that will be included as part of the public input with respect to this issue. So I'm not going to belabor it any further. But again, my, my only concern is just any resulting increase in costs. And from what I'm hearing from staff this evening, there's, there's too many variables to consider when, you know, really coming up with an estimate on the potential cost increase versus having a piece of land that's got a lot of clay below it and having a piece of land that doesn't. So we'll have to just have to accept it for what it is at this time. So through to the rest of the council, unless there's any further, I will be moving to calling the questions. So Counselor Savage?
Yes. Yeah, one last question to staff, please, and this one is in the motion, and that is, why are we proceeding when the urbanics report shows over 20 years, a 3.9 net million dollar loss? We asked them to do this report, and we've discussed it before, but now we're proceeding with things in place. And between the DCC shortfall and other costs, it comes to a net loss of 3.9 million. So is there a reason we're not trying to ameliorate or cure some of this economic hardship that's coming up before we proceed?
I don't understand the question, your worship.
Yeah, I'm trying to, anyways, through to Counselor Savage, I understand in the bottom of your motion, you have, and potential economic hardships for the community are resolved. But I, I believe that's tied to the, the lands that are in your whereas clauses, not necessarily the, and also even in your motion, not necessarily with the other potential hardships you might be referring to. I mean, I'm just, so I, I need you to really tie this to the proposed lands for the community amenity, community amenities that are part of the application.
Yes, well, I brought up the drainage, and that's certainly a major expense with the maintenance of the gardens and so on. But my intention when I wrote the motion was I put right in it, and potential economic hardships for the community are resolved, and that's exactly what I'm asking now. Just in summary, the reason I want this slowed down is because I'm comparing it to the fabulous job of negotiating with the foothills. And this particular proposal has had, to me, nothing but problems and unanswered questions. That's why I want it solved before we proceed to public hearing. That's everything from all the questions I have yet to have answered that I've asked for in writing. And it's also an answer to the urbanics report that shows an economic hardship, which is actually going to cost the community money.
Okay, so Counselor Savage, we're not going to get into debating the application.
Yeah, and then also, yeah, and then also the, this land we're accepting, in my opinion, is below standard for what we should have accepted for land to build on and if we're accepting.
Counselor Savage, we have not accepted any land. This application has yet to be heard, so, in its entirety, and it's still subject to public hearing.
Well, what we're proposing is community service land then. So anyway, those are my reasons for wanting this postponed so we can get to the bottom of all these things before it goes any further. Thank you.
All right, for myself, just in closing, and this is just directed to, to council as a body, if there are any remaining questions regarding this application pre-public hearing, this is the time to get those questions in, and I'm sure staff will do their very best to try and answer such questions that are proposed. So other than that, I will be moving to calling the questions. So all those in favor and opposed, noting that Mayor Swain, Counselor Proctor, Counselor Gussabreck, Counselor Wilson oppose, the motion fails. Now we're on to introduction of late items. Are there any late items to introduce at this time? Okay, hearing or seeing none, moving on to notices, a motion, any notices, a motion? Okay, hearing or seeing none, moving on to public clarification. Is there any public clarification? Again, just stating your name and address for the record. And again, please limit your questions to the business discussed this, this evening. And, and it has to be questions in relation to, you know, how the vote went and any specific technical, maybe clarification type questions. So name and address, please.
Warren Griffey, 6995 Lansville Avenue. I just have clarification, will everyone who wants to speak at the public hearing be able to speak?
So through to Mr. Griffey, that wasn't an item, a business item this evening, so, but, but the one thing I will clarify is those who are participating, as laid out, with respect to our procedure as related to the electronic meeting, as related to the public hearing, will have the opportunity to be heard. That is the goal of the public hearing.
So I'd like to point out that we are not in Nanaimo, we are not.
Okay, Mr. Griffey, again, I need you to ask.
We're not.
Mr. Griffey, I need you to ask specific questions with respect to the business discussed this evening. So if you're wondering if how a vote went and you're not sure, then that's, that's the time to ask that question, or if there was a particular term used or any kind of technical clarification that we may be able to offer to better understand how, how things went, we can try and do that. But we're not going to be offering opinion on.
So, okay, so a clarification on the trees. Counselor Proctor stated that, that the trees, that she looks out her front window and there's trees.
Again, Mr. Griffey, it's how did that vote go? Did it pass, did it fail? Did you want to know? That, that's what we're at, that, that's what this time is for.
I understand that.
So if you have, if you have comments for council, then you're always free to write your, write to your council, call to all members of council and, and express your opinion beyond that. But in terms of our public clarification process at this stage of our meeting, it is simply to clarify the business that was discussed.
Okay, so affordable housing, what housing in Lansville, even with the, the building of, with the Village South, what in Village South will make affordable housing?
Again, Mr. Griffey, and this is the final time now, it's, there is no motion on our agenda this evening that had to do with Village South and affordable housing.
You spoke to it. You all spoke to it.
It doesn't matter if we spoke to it, and it's, it's not the content of our opinions that we're debating here. What we're talking about is how did a particular business go?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. So through to, I guess we have nobody registered for public clarification this evening through the staff? Okay, thank you. And we've made it through our agenda, so I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.